So we're gonna go ahead and start randomly, if you wouldn't mind. We will give you a three-minute opening statement. And why don't we start with you, Antonio?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, buenas tardes. Buenas tardes. Yes, thank you, thank you everybody for being here today. Thank you to the California Chartered Association for hosting. And thank you to Vaughn for inviting all of you and opening a beautiful campus to us. My name is Antonio Sanchez. And I'm running for school board. My passion and my vision for running for school board is fueled by one simple idea. And that is, I want our students to be able to graduate from high school. And I know that seems basic, but the fact of the matter is, four out of 10 students right now don't graduate from high school. They don't get the same opportunities that we do. That's why I decided to run for school board. I see an LAUSD, I'm gonna tell you about three visions that I have. I see an LAUSD that works with our teachers and provides the professional development that they need so they can teach their students. Because it's very unique, every community is different. So I want every teacher to have that professional development so they can help their students be successful. I want our principals to have leadership training that will help them set an atmosphere in the whole school of being successful, of going to college, of getting to work, of getting good grades. I think principals have that power to set that atmosphere in any campus. I also see an LAUSD where our parents are treated as partners. All of you, all of you should be equal partners on a campus. You know what's best for your child. I know you care and love them. So I want to make sure LAUSD helps you stay involved and gives you choices. And I think that's what today's forum is about as well, making sure that you have choices. I want you to send your child where you want them to go to school. You should be able to make that decision. And finally, my third vision that I see for LAUSD is having a fully funded school system. You know, last November, we voted to pass Prop 30. We taxed ourselves to pass Prop 30. Well, all of us here are paying for it. Let's make sure those dollars come to this school, to all of the schools in Pacoima and Sun Valley and North Hollywood and Van Nuys. They have to come here. So as a school board member, I'll make sure to advocate not only in Sacramento, but Washington, DC, so we can get that funding here. So thank you for being here today. My name is Antonio Sanchez, and I'm looking forward to a good discussion. And most importantly, I want to applaud all of the parents and the neighbors and the community members because as we open this dialogue and have more communication, I think more of our students are gonna be successful, and that's what this is about. So thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. Okay, we want to make sure that our Spanish-speaking parents are able to make this unit work. Thank you very much. Oh, see, very good question. For those of you that are still generating your questions, we love to see your questions. And as I mentioned, we're gonna try to honor you by asking as many questions as we can. So also raise them up in the air, and we'll have families that can staff, take them up, and then we'll deliver it to me. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and give Maria an opportunity also to give your opening statement.
Good night, everyone, and welcome. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Thank you to Vaughn for hosting a wonderful forum. I wish we had had more than these because more parents need to be involved in this process, and that's really number one. Our partners unfortunately are not necessarily directly the students sometimes, and we need to work with you as parents to ensure that the partnership actually succeeds, to make sure education succeeds. My name is Maria Caron, and it is my humble and honor feeling to be here because I know that what we're here to do is change education. We're here to make sure that your seat is guaranteed as a parent, that your student graduates. It should not be our goal right now to be fighting for graduation rates, but unfortunately, we have to. We should be fighting for resources, and instead, we have to be here to start again another conversation about graduation. I believe that we have done enough investing, we have paid our taxes, we have networked with each other, we have formed partnerships, and we're ready to say to the district, enough is enough. We want you to respect our voice. We want you to staff our classrooms with teachers. We don't want you to cut our programs because you did not do your job to fight for funding before. We want to say to them, enough is enough. Our community is suffering because you have not made the right decisions. And I'm here to tell you that I'm here as a member of this community for well over 25 years of fighting for programs, not just at this level. Eight and a half years of building schools, and the last 10 years of fighting for better college systems. I'm ready to say to the district, I'm not here to do it by myself, I'm here with all of you as the community behind me to make sure that we increase graduation rates to 90%. We bring back the much-needed teachers. We safeguard and invest money in our dilapidated facilities, and we ensure that our budget is not the first thing that Sacramento and Washington will cut. So I humbly ask for your endorsement. I hope that what I have to say is not vote for me, but join me in this battle. Thank you.
So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and ask Monica for her opening remarks.
Hello, my name is Monica Ratliff. Mi nombre es Monica Ratliff. Yo soy una maestra de quinto grado, y estoy muy feliz para esta oportunidad de hablar con nosotros. Con ustedes, see? Thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. My name is Monica Ratliff, and I am a teacher. I teach fifth grade. And I'm so happy to be here and have the opportunity to speak with all of you. I teach downtown near the Garment District on San Pedro Street, and I live in the valley. I live in Tahunga, the Sunland-Tahunga area. And I'm just, I became a teacher over 10 years ago. I used to be a legal services attorney at San Fernando Valley Neighborhood Legal Services, and I dealt with healthcare access. And I just realized that our clients kept coming back because people were in poverty, they had limited incomes. And I just realized the intense connection between education and success and an income. Because you, if you have an education, you have a greater chance of having that income that can support your family and yourself. And it became a mission of mine to help children get an education and get out of poverty. And so that has been what I've been doing for the last 10 years. And I know that if my school can do it, and my school has students with limited incomes, and my school has students who are English language learners, that is the predominant population at my school. And I know if our school can become successful, our API is 814 now. I know Vaughn's is 807, and it's something to be proud of. Anytime you break 800, it is worth, absolutely, it's worth applause, because it is an achievement. And if it can be done at San Pedro, and if it can be done at Vaughn, it can be done across the district. And so that is my mission. So I'm focused on safety of our students. I want every student to be safe in every classroom across the district. I want every student to have an opportunity to go to college or choose a vocation, whatever is gonna make them and their family successful. And finally, I think we need to have fiscal responsibility. Because as you know, occasionally, that sequester, some of you may have heard about the sequester that is potentially coming, that the district could lose $37 million. So we need to make sure that we're fighting for every dollar that we can get, and that every dollar that we can get is used wisely. So I hope that you will support me, I hope that you will vote for me, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer to gain your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to remind everybody that they will have an opportunity for closing statements, three minutes closing statements. But now it's time to honor you, and we're gonna go ahead and take some of your questions. And actually, we have more. Thank you, Arma. So, the questions, we only have two minutes to respond, so we're gonna see if we can honor that. I do have the first question, so bear with us. One of the most important decisions that the LA Board makes is hiring the superintendent. There have been a lot of changes since Dr. John Daisy became superintendent two years ago. His top priority is improving teacher evaluations. What do you think of this key initiative, and will you support Dr. Daisy in continuing to move this work forward if you are selected? Why don't we start with Monica?
Thank you. I am a teacher, and I can tell you that we need evaluations that help teachers become stronger in what their weaknesses are. And I think that we need to tie teacher evaluations strongly to teacher support and professional development. Because one of the problems I see with the district is that the professional development that is provided to teachers is often in the form of PowerPoint presentations or handouts and booklets. And I think the most powerful way to get better as a teacher is to watch other teachers who are masters at what they do. I also think, and I was talking to someone about this earlier, I read about Vaughn's support, their teacher's support, and how they do retreats, and how they run their professional development. And I just think that there's so much that we can do that is being done at some traditional public schools, as well as some public charters. And I just think if we take those ideas that are working in terms of teacher development, we can strengthen our teaching force. And so I guess my response is that I support an evaluation system that helps identify weaknesses and address them, and celebrate teachers' strengths, and use the teachers' strengths to support the rest of the teachers and to bring them up. And I think that is my only concern with the current system, is I'm concerned that teachers don't get enough instruction, if you will, and real word-of- opportunity to see what works. And so that is my goal, to do that across the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question for Maria.
I think we need, we obviously are in dire need of measuring our progress because we cannot wait for June, May or June to come around to determine whether our classrooms have been successful, whether our teachers have been able to instill enough commitment, enough interest, and enough of the material that needs to be accomplished in one year. There is a lot that needs to be done with evaluations, but one of the things that should not be done with evaluations is a quick decision to let go of teachers that have had a tradition of wonderful successes in the classroom. And we have a lot of that. We need to be careful that we are not trying to solve the bigger issues of the district with just one, one action, and I think that's what we need to be aware of. How are evaluations affecting us everywhere else, not just the classroom? How are they affecting our ability to bring in qualified teachers? I agree that they are an important tool in ensuring that we develop even greater investments in how our teachers are trained, what expectations we have out of them, how they could meet the demand of the 21st century. We're nowhere near that. I think if we're gonna do anything with evaluations, it should start not with letting them go before we determine whether we've done everything to ensure that they will be able to do their job. One of the things that I am against is using them to prevent them from doing their job, and that is my concern. I may not be a teacher, and I appreciate Monica's eloquent way of expressing her experience. Mine is about making sure that we don't lose equity in the classroom by losing good teachers, but we need to be in the process as well. Parents should be part of that decision and have a place at the table, and that has not been guaranteed. And until that happens, the evaluation process is not fair.
Thank you, Maria. And Antonio, same question.
Yes, so the answer to your question is yes, I would work with the superintendent to make sure that we develop a fair evaluation system. I would also work with the Teachers Union, UTLA. An evaluation system for our teachers is about our students, right? We want to make sure that every student has a high-quality, high-performing teacher in the classroom. So that's what we come up with in evaluation, to make sure, hey, this teacher's doing well, let's help them if there is a weakness somewhere. So the evaluation system first and foremost has to be fair. I do not want an evaluation system that's out to get a teacher. That's not the whole point here. I want an evaluation system that helps develop their professional skills, their teaching skills, so they help our students. In December, the superintendent and our labor partners came to an agreement, which was very exciting. It was very exciting to see them agree on something. And now, as we move forward, it's all in the implementation. It's great to have a fabulous idea, but it's all about the implementation. Let's make sure that our principals have the time to perform an effective evaluation. But let's make sure that the evaluation helps teachers become better at their profession. That's the whole point here. I'm also happy that it is including student performance. I think that that was an important milestone that we've reached, and we'll continue to better the evaluation system. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. So we do have another very important question, and I want to honor this parent, community stakeholder. LAUSD has been expanding quality school options for parents through adding more charter schools, pilot schools, and even magnets. There are still many families that are on waitlist for charter schools yet in November. Board member Steve Zimmer proposed a moratorium on any new charter schools. Would you have supported a moratorium? Do you support the expansion of charter schools? Why don't we ask Maria to start?
I am the first proponent of choice in education because when I and the rest of my family, about 75% of which are here tonight, were going to school, there weren't options. There weren't options for overcrowded classrooms. There weren't options when we didn't have specialized programs. We knew there was intelligence in our families because we did our job, my parents did their job, to instill in us that education was first and foremost the priority. As immigrants to this country, that was the most important priority. When options are necessary because we have so much talent, and that talent needs to be applauded, that talent needs to be nurtured, and we need to make sure that we grow the talent that is out there, and we grow those programs that are successful. We also need to be vigilant over those programs that are not successful, and there are those stories too in charter and traditional schools. That's where the board member will have a huge responsibility. Cutting off options without discussion and without protecting this very option and choice is not, is not just. We need to have options, and we need to make sure they grow, but we need to make sure that the ones that aren't successful don't grow either. And so we need to, we need to step in and say, that which is, which is successful, it's meeting the needs of the community. We should work to open the doors, open more space for those programs that are successful. And we, and it should not just be about charter. It should be about magnets, it should be about choice schools. If I want, if I wanted an option for biology, what school's teaching it successfully, and what school is showing the most promise? That's where we want to direct parents. We don't want to just show them that there's only one option, and therefore, we should close it out to everyone. Thank you.
Well, actually, when I first started as a teacher at UCLA, I was in the graduate program, getting my master's, and I actually was thinking about having my own charter. Because I was like, these charters are a real opportunity to take a vision and make it a reality. And in the end, I started student teaching at San Pedro, and I ended up working at San Pedro, and I love San Pedro, and I'm a total proponent of successful traditional public schools. And I, and one of the things I really like about San Pedro that I want to make sure is happening across the district is that we attempt to meet the needs of every student that walks in the door. And that means that we have the student that has bitten the teacher, and we have the student that has run around the classroom and out the door, and down the hall, and out into the yard, and we have to send someone and keep them safe, and make sure that they're secure, and bring them back to the classroom. And it's just so important to me that every child have access to a successful school. And so ultimately, that is my main focus. And so I will support any school, anywhere in the district, though obviously, I want to focus on the valley, that is open to all students and is successful. And I think we need to look at expanding the concept, not, I'm not saying we need to expand charters, or we need to expand magnets, or we need to expand public school choice and pilot schools, or we need to expand. I'm saying we need to expand is successful schools. And so we need to take what works, and we need to apply it across the district. And the beauty is, we already know what works, because we have traditional public schools, and we have public charters that work, and we have magnet schools that work, and we can take that framework, we can take what we know, and we can spread it across the district. And that's my vision. Thank you.
So no, I would not support a moratorium. So this is about good schools. I don't care if we're talking about a charter school, a pilot school. I went to magnet schools, whatever the form, whatever the model is, I want you to have more options. So it, so if there were a moratorium, and there is a charter school waiting to be approved, that was as incredible as Vaughn, that we're here now. It would absolutely be a crime to wait to open the school. We can't wait any longer. I don't want to wait for another academic year. I don't want to wait another day. If we have a successful school that's waiting to be opened to serve your kids, then I think they should be around. I think we should have options. That's the whole point. This conversation, as I go through the campaign, you know, people try to say, are you for charter schools, are you against charter schools? It's not about that with me. This is about good schools. So I'm gonna be supportive of all good schools. I hate to put it so, at such basic level, but the conversation needs to, needs to elevate. So we talk about good schools, period. I don't care what the model is. So I'll be supportive. And frankly, here in Board District 6, I know that 75% of our charter schools in Board District 6 have an API score of over 800. 75% of the charter schools, which is amazing. Which is, which means that more options for you, more options for your kids, so they can be successful. Our regular schools, which I am fully invested and want to help to make sure that they also reach that, it's about 35% of our, of our regular traditional schools that have an API score of over 800. So I want to make sure those scores are increased, but I want to make sure that in the now, you and your kids have options.
Antonio, stay there, because you're gonna be the first for the next question, but we're gonna do something different. And so I'm gonna say it in English, and then I'm gonna say it in Spanish. We're gonna go ahead and give the next question, but I'm gonna say it also in Spanish, and then I would like for you to, and Maria, and of course, Monica, as you feel, to go ahead and give your response in Spanish. Apparently, the little units are not as functional as we thought they were going to be because of the echo, so we're gonna honor our Spanish-speaking parents that way, if that's okay with you. Are we okay with that? Okay, so here's the question. The district hasn't always welcomed parent engagement, for instance. School board meetings are held during the day when married parents have to work. How will you make sure to include parents like us here today when making decisions on the board? Antonio?
I'll start in English. So yes, I think it's very important for our parents to attend the school board meetings, absolutely. I understand, I don't like driving all the way to downtown sometimes, so I understand that's an issue, but you know, frankly, I think it's more important to have all that information available at your schools. We have hundreds of schools across this board district and the San Fernando Valley. Let's make sure that you have the information there, that, let's make sure that your principals are welcoming you onto your campus. Yes, you can go to downtown, absolutely, if that's what you want to do, but I want to make sure that you have a place, that you're part of the conversation in the, in your child's classroom, on their campus. So it starts with a good parent center. I've seen parent centers host cooking classes, host parenting classes, host English classes, help parents figure out what the report card means, help parents go online and navigate the school's website. I think that's important. I'll go in Spanish?
Thank you. Maria?
I love this question. I spent, again, eight and a half years working with parents just to get the district to listen to them about what was best for their communities. Eight and a half years of parents telling me, mija, we cannot start talking about building schools because we have so many problems to deal with in our school. Help us fix those first. And you know what they told me? They told me that the district does not listen to parents. It doesn't matter that you have a parent center. It doesn't matter that you have district representatives coming to the parent center, because that information never leaves the parent center. That's the problem with parent engagement. We don't value your opinion. Do you want a board to continue to tell you what to do? Or do you want a board that's gonna say, parents, your voice is 50% of the, 50% of the goal?
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. And now, it's gonna be Monica, and I'd be happy to translate as needed.
Yes.
Yo pienso que es muy importante que los meetings, no sé, es meeting conferences?
Juntas?
Juntas. Está en la noche a veces. So I think mainly, we need to change the structure of the board meetings, because for too long, they've been during the day.
too long, they've been during the day.
Es muy simple. Creo que es importante cambiar la estructura de las juntas porque por mucho tiempo han sido durante el día.
Which stops public comment because you can't be there. I can't be there as a teacher.
Y lógicamente, para el comentario de la comunidad. ¿Por qué? Porque no están allí y, por ejemplo, ahorita no está ella tampoco allí porque está trabajando.
So recently, there was, today there was an education summit, a really great opportunity to learn about education from others, but it was held on a weekday during the day. I couldn't attend, I'm guessing many of you couldn't attend, and this would have been a great opportunity. And so I think this event should have been held on the weekend. So we need to look at ways to bring the community in so that they can speak and they can have a voice.
Un ejemplo que da es que hoy día tuvimos una conferencia muy importante en Los Ángeles durante la mañana, donde muchos de nosotros, incluyéndose ella, no pudo asistir. Y aunque fue muy importante, muchos de nosotros fallamos la oportunidad. Es por eso que ella dice que es importante reconocer que muchos eventos deben ser durante los fines de semana para que nosotros tengan la ventaja de participar.
Sí, muchas gracias.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're doing great. Everybody having a good time? Qué bien. Okay. So this one is with regards to low-performing schools, okay? The district has a new academic performance framework, I'm sure you're familiar with it, to identify the lowest-performing schools, focused schools, okay? And to figure out how to turn them around, okay? One approach to this was the Public School Choice Initiative. Some of us are hip to that, which allowed charter schools the opportunity to run low-performing schools, okay? However, in 2011, charter schools were barred from this program. What do you think should be done to turn around low-performing schools? And what role do you see charter schools playing in this work? Monica, we're going to ask you to go first.
Okay. Well, necesito tu ayuda, sí?
We're going to go ahead and just do English on this one.
Okay, all right. Oh, oh, solamente en inglés?
Claro.
Para todos?
Sí.
Ah, okay, all right. So in terms of the opportunity for charters to run low-performing schools, I think what's really interesting is that, you know, I'm just going to call it out, you know, the parent trigger law, right? The idea that parents can say, "This school is not performing and I want something done at this school." And I think that what I think we need to do as a district is do a better job of addressing the low-performing schools before we get to that point, that parents feel the need to organize and take over the school. And I mean, I understand, I will always support people's right to organize and I support labor's right to organize, I support parents' right to organize, I will always support people's right to organize. But it just concerns me that in this case, it takes so long for the district to address low-performing schools, when the reality is, the information is right there. We can see where the low-performing schools are. It's not a secret. They're not hidden. And the idea that it would take parents three years to have a school be identified and to try to make a difference at that school, and I'm referring to the parent trigger at 24th Street, how it took parents three years to organize, I just think that's outrageous that we've allowed a school to languish for that long and for those children to be not getting the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to emphasize the question, if that's okay, okay? I think this is a really important question, that's why. Thank you, Monica. What do you think should be done to turn around low-performing schools? And what role do you see charter schools playing in this work, okay? Why don't we ask Maria?
I think that we need to be aggressive as a district. That is a priority as a board member and it should have, that's something that should have been happening a long time ago. When parents have to tell the district how to run the district, I think it's sad. I think it's unjust that we have to wait till parents remind us that we're not doing our job because the only ones who are suffering are the children every day at school who are not getting the education that we promised. And I think that it is also sad that parents have to exert to, exhort to the kind of law that gives them authority over a school. That also tells me that the district has been irresponsible with educating the children, with the responsibility to manage, to administer, and to oversee the day-to-day operations of our school. We have many parents, even within the Valley, 24th Street may be the first one that's doing it, but we have Valley parents who are already saying, "We want to do that." But they want to do that not just because they feel that the schools are not operating to their best standard, they want to do that because they haven't been heard. So we're not talking about just one problem. Parent trigger is being used to resolve huge amount of problems. And where I see charters, I've been asked this question so many times, and I need to emphasize because it's so important. Together, we will be able, as masses, to move mountains. Individually, we can only fight for individual causes. And we have great examples of what it is to succeed and we should partner with those individuals and programs that are out there doing a great job and say to them, "Step in to help mentor." Just like we, parents, mentor teachers. Just like I had to mentor my brothers and sisters. Just like students are mentoring other students. We need a partnership that's going to succeed where we are actually committed to each other. That's the only way we're going to succeed with those schools.
Thank you so much. Maria? Antonio? Sure. So the question is, what do you think should be done to turn around low-performing schools? And what role do you see charter schools playing in this work?
So there are a lot of factors that can help us identify low-performing schools. KC passage rates, dropout rates, how many students have been reclassified to English proficient categories. So there are many things that we can do. How clean a campus is, how welcoming the environment is, how active the parents are. What I think we should do, bring more resources. So first, if we recognize that a school needs more help, let's bring more teachers there. Let's help them build the curriculum that's going to help those students in that classroom. Excuse me. Let's make sure that helps them specifically, so we bring in more resources. How charters can be involved? I think we need to do a better job of sharing best practices. I think this is a much-needed activity. So if I'm elected, this is what, this is an initiative I am going to push in my Board District. I want the principal at Vaughn Elementary to talk to the principal at Haddon Elementary. I want to know what the success, what brings them to success? What helps their students be able to graduate, be able to learn how to read and perform math at a faster rate? So I think there's a lot of sharing of best practices that can happen, that needs to occur more often. And if I'm elected, I'm going to push that. And I think it might make some people uncomfortable, but that's okay. Because at the end of the day, I want us as adults to put our issues aside and start thinking about how we can help those students be more successful. So it starts with communication. It starts with recognizing that some charter schools and hey, some magnet schools, that let's also communicate with them too, the pilot schools. Let's make sure that they have that ability. I think it also, we also need to include more local control. There are some teachers in the district that have voted to give themselves more autonomies from the district curriculum. If that makes sense, then we should encourage it and help them with that.
Thank you so much. And it's going to be like a little stretch, vamos a estirarnos poquito, because you have done an amazing job and I think right now we need to kind of give them a cheer because they're doing great. Un aplauso. Todavía tenemos tiempo. We still have some time for a few more questions. Are you guys, you guys okay with a few more questions? Excellent. And I do want to remind you that we want to break bread together, okay? Okay, it's pizza, but it is bread, okay? And we're going to invite everybody to join us for dinner. ¿Qué les parece después de la junta? Nos podemos juntar un poquito ahí atrás? Van a estar los candidatos con nosotros. Vamos a invitar a todos que nos acompañen para comer pizza, okay? No son tacos, pero son pizza, okay? So Proposition 39, okay? Under the state law, Proposition 39, districts are supposed to provide equitable facilities for students at charter schools, but that doesn't always happen, okay? Many charter schools in LAUSD have inadequate facilities or are forced to spend a large part of their budget to rent facilities, which may not have good sports fields or other amenities. What will be your approach to ensuring the charter school students in LA have access to quality school facilities, okay? Why don't we start with Maria?
Thank you. I was in charge of doing charter expansions with the district for some areas. They started doing pilots back in the West Side first, which I was opposed to because I thought we should do these kinds of programs everywhere. One of the biggest concerns for me as an individual and as a board member, what I would be concerned with is safety. My current office right now, for the, our call center, has a charter next to it and every day, we see the students walking across the street to do, to exercise. And every so often, they have to be reminded, the students have to be reminded that they are outside and they have to be careful with traffic, pedestrians, sometimes dogs, that's sad. But we need to be, we cannot let, our students, I've said it and I'm going to say it over and over again, every child is equal to the next child, independent of what facility they're in. To me, it's about equity in education for every child. And that is a huge concern for me because safety is an issue. Because they need to be receiving the same amount of space and exercise options, they're called physical activities classes. The classroom space is not there. The class may be there, but the space is not. And the same students that I'm talking about are the students whose parents I see at the grocery store, whose parents I see at church. So there is no difference. All children need to be in safe environments at all times. That is a commitment of the district and that's something I will be working very hard to ensure because it's at the very top of my list in terms of facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica, you want to give it a try?
Well, I believe ultimately you're speaking in a sense about co-location. Is that correct? Prop 39, co-location? Yes.
It could be, it could be definitely that.
Okay. And my feeling on that is, I'm going to support the law, is really what it comes down to. And so if the law says that space needs to be provided, opened up, if you will, to charter schools, if that space is available at a school, then I'm going to support the law. And I was talking to a friend of mine, who's a teacher at San Pedro, and her husband actually works at a school called Synergy, which is a charter school. And we were talking about the issue of co-location and how are things done at that school? Because this particular Synergy branch, if you will, because I know they have several schools, is co-located on a traditional public campus. And what she said that Synergy had done was that they had offered, the Synergy staff had offered to take over yard supervision. And so now, Synergy was providing yard supervision at this particular campus. And now, I'm not saying that I'm going to support the law and you all have to, charters have to do yard supervision. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that it was an attempt to work together, that it was an attempt to find a way to share the space in a manner that benefited everyone and that everyone felt good about. And so I think mainly, when we're looking at this co-location issue, we need to find ways to promote a good relationship because I think it can be done, it is being done, and we need to make sure it's done across the district. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Antonio?
So yes, Prop 39 is the law. And if there is a charter school, so the process is, once a charter school applies for a facility, this happens in November. They wait a couple months, February comes along and the district offers them options. They say, "This is our inventory. Pick what makes the most sense for you." If that charter school finds a good location and it meets their needs, you know, every child deserves a healthy environment where they can learn. I played basketball when I was in high school. I think every child should have that option. I used to play basketball during recess and then I was on the basketball team. I want to make sure that they have access to good facilities so they can, you know, pursue whatever, whatever they want to do during that time. So what, once a charter school identifies a location, let's say it's February and we identify a location, let's make sure those principals meet as soon as possible. And that's going to be my job as a school board member. Once we identify co-location, we have to make sure that whoever's in that location now and the incoming charter school, let's get them to talk. A lot of these issues can be solved by just talking and communicating. I'm a firm believer in working through an issue together and not only talking with the staff, the principals and the teachers, but also the community. I want them to understand what's going on. It's important for them. I don't want, you know, once, you know, if a rumor gets out and it gets misunderstood and, I want people to have the good, the exact information of what's happening. So my, my role is going to be, let's get everybody talking. Let's get there and let's facilitate, not a lose-lose because the conversation about Prop 39 and co-location, you know, is too often viewed as a lose-lose. I want it to be a win-win for both, for both schools and for all the students.
Thank you so much. Okay, we've arrived to the point where we asked the last question and then your closing statements. So bear with us, this is the last question. We'll ask Monica to go first, okay? So here's the question. As you know, this year, the district went through some serious scandals, especially with the case with a couple of cases of molestation. And so the question is, if you are elected board member, how would you change the process to identify individuals? And how would students, how would you ensure the students are safe?
That is a great question. I really appreciate that question. As I've said before, student safety is paramount to me. I tell my students, you know, "Your parents dropped you off this morning and they want you in the same condition at the end of the day, or better than they dropped you off." So it's really important that you're safe. You need to be safe on the stairs, you need to be safe in the classroom, and it is essential. And I think that when you look at these horrific cases of abuse, what really kills me is that they had happened repeatedly. What really killed me is that you would have an adult in a school believe that they could abuse a child, not just one, but more than one child. Like, over time, I mean, that is just disgusting. And it says to me that there is not enough monitoring of the classrooms and that there is not enough monitoring of the school. And so I think we need assistant principals to free up the principals so that the principals can do their job, which is to know what's happening in the school and in the classrooms. I think principals need to be freed up so that they can not be buried under paperwork but be allowed to walk around the classrooms and know what's going on. And it also helps them identify teachers that need help and like teachers who can help others. I think this is an idea, this time has come. But I also think we need more mental health professionals on campus because they will have a sense of what's going on and children will feel comfortable to go to those mental health professionals. We have a counselor and she's said she's open to all students and the students like going to her, but she's only on campus one day a week. And so I think we really need to look at making the environment safer by having more eyes on what is going on in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Antonio, we're going to invite you. Yeah.
Zero tolerance. If we know someone has abused a child, if, you know, they have to be taken out of the classroom immediately. This isn't a maybe, this isn't a, "I heard, it's possible." If we know it happened, then let's act now. What, you know, at reading, as I read about what happened in Mira Monte and at Telfair Elementary, what's so disappointing and what angers me is that, you know, people would say, "Oh, we always, you know, we always kind of knew sort of, like, we wouldn't let the teachers stay, we wouldn't let them close the door." You know, we have to free the principals so they have time, so they can know their teachers. That's really it. They have to be able to have the time. So they're not just focused on operations and facilities, but they have the time. So they're not just focused on operations and facilities, but they have the time to properly evaluate their teachers and, and make the time to have a conversation with them, so they know what's going on. I think, you know, as, my role as a school board member, this is, you know, training that needs to happen across all of LAUSD, not just in, in, in the board district I want to represent, but all, across LAUSD. And zero tolerance, absolutely. If we know something, something's happening, then let's, let's identify it. Everybody deserves a fair trial, obviously. There's due process in everything. But if we know someone has abused a child, take them out of the classroom immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Maria?
I think it is the worst thing that we can say about the district, that it has not been tough enough on, on anyone who has remotely been accused of, of such a heinous act. Zero tolerance is an understatement. We need to remove the person and engage our authorities immediately to, to make sure that we've got protections, not just inside the district, but outside. Currently, the district operates on a process that actually trains everyone on a computer about what is their responsibility. I took that process, you have to be certified every year. It takes about 30 minutes, because you know the answer. Nothing has changed, that's the problem. We're not just talking about passing a no-tolerance certificate that's required by the district every year. We're talking about making sure that the district has a process in place that's going to act. You put your children in our hands, and we need to reassure you 150% that they will be safe. And we will not do that until we change our internal process, not just in reporting, but in processing and taking individuals who have committed such horrible crimes to the authorities. We should not just kick them out, we should make sure they serve their time. And we are not being proactive in that manner, because we want to wash our hands to make sure that they're not in the classroom, and that's it. But guess what? They go work for another district, and yes, it is our responsibility at that point. We cannot and should not and will not stand for anything short of a process that very clearly says A, B, and C needs to happen, and D, they're in jail. But it has to be now, and it has to be a process that's clear, and it has to be a process that is, that is clear to not just parents and teachers, administrators, students and their parents, because they go home to share the stories, and they may never get to school, because their stories stay at home. And we need to create, clear the path, so that communication is, is there.
Thank you so much, Maria. Okay. So we got to the, we, they do a great job, let's give another round of applause. Thank you so much, all three candidates. You will have a last opportunity to give your closing remarks, and so we'd like to invite Antonio to go first. Three minutes, each candidate.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody. Look, I want to remind you why I'm running. I'm running so your kids, hopefully one day, if I'm blessed with kids, my kids are able to graduate from high school. That, that's what this is about. And unfortunately, that's a conversation that we have to have, because too many of our students are dropping out. I also want to let you know that there's a certain student that I want to fight for as well. When I came to this country, I, I was born in, in Chicago, but my parents moved back to Mexico. So I'm from Saguayo, Michoacan. I was in Michoacan until I was six, then my parents moved to North Hollywood. I didn't speak a word of English. I was absolutely terrified. I know that I shared this experience with, with many of you and, and a lot of your kids. I remember walking out of our apartment in North Hollywood and, you know, not knowing how I'm going to talk to anybody. First and second grade, I was an English language learner. I was that kid that either, I had great teachers that helped me, I would stay, you know, after school to help me pick up the language, but I hated spelling tests, I hated reading in front of the class. It was a scary, it was a scary situation. And I know that a lot of your kids are in the same situation. Finally, when I got to fifth grade, oh, I'm identified as gifted. We have to do more to identify more kids as gifted, so they can realize that they're just as smart as everybody else. And that's, you know, that's been my experience, and that's what's fueling me. That's why I want to serve on the school board. That's why I'm asking for your support today. So once this child recognizes that they can be successful, that they can go to college if they want to. I always knew I was going to go to college. I had two, I, I had two great teachers that are here today, but I had a lot of great teachers in my life that always created this atmosphere of, "You're going to be successful, you can do what you want to do, and it's up to us to help create that environment." I honestly think so. So if a student wants to go to college, I want them to get into college, you know, college-level math and college-level English, because I'm sure many of you know now, college is too expensive, and they don't need to waste their time taking remedial classes. They just need to get to work. If a student doesn't want to go to college, I understand that some, some of my friends just needed to start working, because you just have to start working, and I understand family situations are different. I've met too many people that can't read and write, that are, that are in their twenties, that are in their thirties, and they couldn't read a page to me. That's wrong. The system failed them, and I want to make sure that doesn't happen. That, I want to make sure it doesn't happen to your kids, you know, and hopefully one day, I want to make sure that doesn't happen to my kids. And that's why I'm here to ask for your support. I grew up not too far away in Pacoima, came to the local schools, went to Caustic Northridge, worked in these communities, graduated with UC, from UCLA, and will continue to do so. So thank you all for being here today, taking a fan, and thank you for that for hosting.
Thank you. Antonio? Okay? We're going to ask Maria to go next.
I want, again, I want to say thank you for being here. It is so important that you get involved, and being here tonight proves that we are growing in our effort to participate in education. And I encourage you to take what you've learned today and take it to your friends, your neighbors, your family, because if you guys are anything like my family, we get together and decide how we're going to vote, because we believe strongly that education is so important. Like I mentioned earlier, I wasn't born in this country. I was born in Mexico, in Tlauta, Atlanta, de Corona Jalisco. Very proud of it, because when my parents brought me here when I was three years old, I also did not know how to speak English. But I had to learn it really quick, and it wasn't because I had to, I, I had to, because of school. It was because my parents also needed to communicate with the world around us, so I learned very real quickly to become a translator. But I also learned that I had to be really good at school. I learned to listen to every one of my teachers. I learned to bring in every other student who couldn't speak English either, because they needed some help. I grew up, because the community raised me, and I grew up committed to making sure that the community was going to get something back. With seven brothers and sisters, I had to start with my family. And I'm happy to say that the last one that I put through college was my little brother, Christopher Conno, who graduated from UC Davis. And I'm very proud of that, because I feel that as the first, first born, first one to go to college from my family, I have a responsibility to make sure you know how to send your children to college, because it's not easy. It doesn't matter that I was considered gifted, because I still didn't have the resources. It doesn't matter that my parents believed education was first, because I still didn't know how, how to start a college application. And it didn't matter that my teachers saw in me and said, "You're going to grow up and, and do, and do this for your community, and you're going to grow up and be somebody." If I don't have the resources, if I don't have the support, there's just so far you can go. I don't believe that I was the only gifted one. The only reason I was able to succeed is because I had a lot of this community that saw me grow up actually support me. If it wasn't for you all, I wouldn't be here. If it wasn't for the parents that my parent, that my father joined in, in helping fight education and the PTAs, I wouldn't be here. All of you said, "We've got to help each other, we've got to help your children." I feel I owe it to you to make sure that every child graduates, because not, I don't agree that only some children are gifted. Everybody is gifted in their own field. Every one of your children deserves to be what they want to be. Every child deserves an opportunity, and that's what this race is about. Every child, choice for every child. Early education, adult education, or special education, every child deserves a home in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And of course, Monica, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I really appreciated the opportunity to be here tonight, and I hope you will vote for me. I'm the only teacher in the race, and most of my students, actually, when, when both of the candidates talked about being English language learners, that, that is who my students are. My students are English language learners. And I know these strategies that work in terms of helping our students become fantastic students, and, and, and end up basically like the candidates behind me, out there making a difference and trying to change the world. And I believe that it's important to have someone who has seen what works, who has been in the classroom and knows exactly what schools need to succeed. And that is why I'm asking for your vote. I've been endorsed by the Los Angeles Times and the Daily News, and the reason I say that is because those are independent organizations. I didn't get those endorsements because I'm tied to any politicians or any special interest groups. I got those org, I got those endorsements because they believe I'm the best candidate for the Board of Education. And I ask for you to do some research and to find out about the other candidates and myself, and make a decision about who is going to be your elected board member. Because I think it should be someone who's here because of you, not because they're funded by special interests and that they will owe perhaps special interests, but because they will owe the voter. If you vote for me, I will be here for you. I will not run for another office in four years, I'll certainly stay the entire four years, and I will try to stay your board member as long as possible. Four years, eight years, 12 years, you're going to have to drag me out kicking and screaming, because I believe in education. I believe in what education can do, and I know that together, we can change education across the Valley and across the entire district. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, a couple announcements before we adjourn. Candidates' guides are going to be in the back. The other thing is, the candidates are going to stick around. So for those that have not provided a question and want to ask a question, feel free to kind of rub elbows with them. Now, let's give them a round of applause. Un gran aplauso a los candidatos. Last announcement. Don't forget to vote March 5th. I want to thank Anita, you have a fabulous, fabulous team, you have, obviously, families that can, that sponsored this wonderful event, the association, Charter School Association, thank you so much. I will be remiss if I didn't mention. Los papás son los número uno maestros de sus hijos. Les queremos dar las gracias a ustedes. Les felicitamos. Las familias pack. Las familias de Vaughn. Felicidades. Excellent job. Y recuerden, el voto el 5 de marzo. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much.